Welcome everybody to the Millbury Planning Board, the May 12th, 2025 meeting. With that, would everybody please rise?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Easy, easy. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Bruce DeValle, clerk of the planning board. Tonight's meeting is a hybrid meeting. You may participate in person or remotely via computer by going to zoom.us, entering access code 89367130574, or by calling in at 301-715-8592. You can use star six to mute and unmute your phone line. We ask that all speakers, we ask all speakers to please identify yourselves at the podium or online each time you speak by stating your name, address, town of residence for the record. We ask participants in person to use the microphone, and please address all comments and questions through the chair. Discussion or comments about town employees or board members shall be avoided so as not to violate individual rights. This public, this is a public meeting and is being broadcast on local access and is being recorded by Millbury Public Access Cable Television, available live on public access channels Charter 191 and Verizon 26. Richard Goslin, chairman.
Yeah, I'd just like to add to, like that last statement about the town employees and everything else. I mean, if you do have a problem, or you're not seeing eye to eye with any of the town officials, you can feel free to come into the town hall and talk to them directly. This is not to shelter them, but it's just not appropriate at this meeting, that's all. With that, call order seven, the planning board reorganization. I will hand this over to...
Sure. Good evening. Yeah, folks on the board might remember the first meeting after the town election, the board reorganizes and selects new chairs, vice chairs and clerks. And so I will administer that process and just remind everyone, I will accept a motion for someone to take the position. We'll look for a second and then we'll have a vote amongst the board and select the vice, the chair, vice chair and clerk. So with that, I would entertain a nomination for chair.
How does it go? I'd like to nominate Bruce for chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I think we had a motion and a second for Bruce for chair, and I was looking for a vote for, for that. I think I heard.
We did.
We heard everyone, okay. Then I will go to, accept a nomination for vice chair.
Nominate Paul.
Second.
Okay, there's been a nomination and a second for Paul for vice chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, passes four to one. And I will accept a nomination for clerk.
I'll nominate Tony for clerk.
Is there a second? Second. So for Tony for clerk, is all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, and that passes, so, yep, that's all, that is all set, and so I would turn it over to...
Bruce must have come up here.
We can see where we are for tonight, can't we?
Well, the camera's centered on...
Okay.
You better off on it this way.
Want to get out of that chair that quick, huh?
Well, it hasn't been fun the last year.
It's been a long time. We got the cripple over here. This is gonna be weird. All right, well, thank you guys for nominating me for chairman. It's gonna be a little strange, a little getting used to. So, that being said, the reorganization is done, public hearings, there are no public hearings, other business. We have a, an A&R off Federal Hill Road. Is there anybody here? How you doing, sir? Yes, if you would, please.
Name and address.
Oh, I'm Joseph Ankeliak, Federal Hill Road in Oxford, Mass. I'm the executor of basically the property from, I'm settling my mother's will, and this is what I have to break up with my siblings, the property. And so that's, and if you see what, most of it's in Oxford, but I guess maybe the history a little bit that I know of, is that if you can, you can see on the periphery to the, kind of the right-hand side, you'll see these bounds found, bounds found, bound found. Years and years ago, that was the old Oxford-Millbury Town Line. And I guess back around the early 1900s, the county snapped a straight line that you now see that says Town Line Oxford-Millbury. So that's why the, the old deeds followed the stone walls where the town markers were. And, you know, the majority of it was in Oxford, but a few slivers just popped into Millbury. So I've got an approval from Oxford because, just to back up, a lot like if you see, there was a lot A, B, C, that was kind of one parcel. Per the will, I have to give my sister part of the house and break it up equally. So that's what we've kind of agreed to, is what you see kind of here, where you see the lot A, B, C. And then on the, kind of let's call it the north side of what's called the right-of-way, used to be an old road called Baker Road, leading from Oxford to Millbury. It was closed around 1913, so now it's just the right-of-way. But like I say, with my siblings, this lot F, one of them wanted a little bit more property. So that one parcel, E was one big piece. But again, you can see where the line kind of just slices through Millbury and Oxford. So since it's getting broken up, I have to get approval, I guess, from both towns. And that's kind of why I'm here tonight. And then maybe justice aside for what it matters is, you'll see on that one piece called the Flat Hill pasture, owner unknown. It's been in the, we've been fenced in and farming it for years. There's a title problem. I'm working with an attorney out of Whitemanville to get clear title on that, and that's the only reason that's on here. But, so I guess what I'm requesting is that, you know, the A&R, so that I can get lot F and lot C approved.
F and C.
If you have any questions, I'm trying to answer.
Well, I'm trying to find F. And through the chair, just to...
F is that little block.
That's the triangle?
No, 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 no.
No, in the corner of lot E.
If you go along the right-of-way.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah, okay.
And through the chair, this is a, kind of a complicated A&R plan, so I did put it up on the screen for the board and the audience to, you can see the, the yellow dotted line is the town boundary between Millbury and Oxford, and the outlined red is the portion that is being A&R'd within the town of Millbury. It does not have frontage on a way and on a road, and so the portions of the lot in Millbury is labeled non-buildable at this time.
Is that that triangle right beside lot E that you're talking about?
And this, this image here shows where the parcel is in the town of Millbury. It's on the very west end of Millbury. It does, like, like I said, it's part of that collection of parcels near Federal Hill Road, but it does not have access to Federal Hill Road. It is connected through some of the other parcels in Oxford.
It was a, it was a road back in 1913, I believe, town of Oxford closed it.
And again, just to be clear, it's, it's lot F and C that we're working on right now?
Yeah, I believe for you, for the town of Millbury, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Rich, you have any comments on that?
I just, one quick comment, and I'm assuming because of the way you struck the town line, you held the town bounds in the corners of the town and not any of the road bounds or anything to try to establish that line? In other words, over the, over the course of time, we've found, especially when GIs and GPS and all that came into play, that a lot of these town lines were incorrectly shown on plans. And if they had, in order to do it, you've got to go back to the actual town-bound corner. And I'm assuming that's what Kevin did. Is that what he did?
He did. He went, he, I mean...
Yeah, yeah. No, it's not gonna show up on this map, whatever it is, it's...
He did locate them.
Yeah, yeah. And they struck the line that way?
And that, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'm good with that, then.
Like I said, I'm just, and also just if you're interested, right, the old markers are still out there from the old days.
Oh, no. They're not gonna go away.
Just, you know, maybe you're interested or not, I just wanted to know they're still there, and it took me for a while, it's like, what the heck's going on with this straight line? Because, you know, I know where the boundaries are from being out there, and it's like, then somebody told me, it's okay, yeah, back in the early 1900s, the county snapped a straight line, and so, you know, that's why the deeds are kind of the way they are, they follow the old lines and...
Well, they, those, yeah, they, where they shot the old lines were, they didn't really know, you know?
Like I said, there's stone walls there and stuff, so I was, you know, it was way before my time, I'll be honest, but...
Yeah, well, fortunately, that's not where the line was when they finally came out and they looked and they said, oh, so that, you know...
So anyway, that's why we're here and...
No, it's good. I'm good.
Paul, you have anything?
No, I'm good with it.
Okay. How about you, friend?
Yeah, I got a question. How are you even gonna access this lot through the right-of-way?
If, it's my siblings, right, so they do, they kind of have access to it through that right-of-way. I mean, if they ever want to subdivide or, I mean, develop it or something, then that's a whole new ballgame, and that's why all the comments are in here, it's not a buildable lot at this time.
Right, but I'm concerned with lot F that you're taking away from lot E to make that lot F. How is that even gonna be accessed? That's my question. Through the right-of-way?
He can. My one sibling can access it through that right-of-way.
Okay, and my other question is, if you needed just that little bit of frontage or whatever it was, why didn't you take it away from lot E?
Friend, I think they're trying to make that lot consistent from town to town.
I mean, what it was, my one brother wanted, he just wanted a little bit extra lot for woodlot, really, more than anything, and he was happy with that, and so I left it there. I mean, there's kind of an old path there. I mean, you know, we can drive the tractors and stuff through it, but that's about it. You're not gonna get a car through there.
Yeah, but this, this is a question that's not pertaining to this. Is he planning on building a house on it? How's he gonna access it? So it's just gonna be a dead lot?
It's a woodlot for getting wood, you know, firewood and stuff like that, and if down the road, somebody wants to open up the road, that's their prerogative, you know, but...
It's a lot of money.
Right, I mean, I don't see it happening, but, you know, I'm not...
So if I understand, these are original lines, then, from 100 years ago or whatever?
Yeah, I, my grandmother bought the place around 1927, and I think that piece that says unowned, that was bought around the 1950s.
And we don't know who owns that triangle piece that's part of Millbury?
Well, we own it. I mean, the, again, part of, I believe, and I'm guessing and speculating is, Millbury says it's unowned, but I can show you the deed that my grandparents bought. It runs the whole periphery of this thing. It's clearly spelled out. And I think when that line got snapped years ago, you know, like you said, there was none of these GIs-type maps and stuff today. Towns didn't follow up on assessors' maps, and once this gets all done, then I can deal with the assessors in town, get the tax bill set up right.
So friend, you're referring to lot E, right?
Yeah. I'm looking at that triangle piece there, Bruce. Who owns that? Nobody?
They do. They own all of this.
My mother, my mother's estate owns it.
Yeah, they own all of it. So we're referring to, for tonight, we're referring to lot F and C.
Correct.
So you're only looking at F and C, okay. All right.
And the town of Oxford?
And the town of, I've already had approval from the town of Oxford.
Yeah. Tony, do you have anything?
No. It's good.
Friend, do you have anything else, friend?
No, well, one, one more thing. So to be clear, are you looking for this triangle piece too? This big triangle piece?
Friend, if you can see on the screen, it's the area in red that is the portion of this lot being A&R'd in the town of Millbury.
So that's that big triangle piece?
Yeah.
And you own that anyway?
Yeah, I mean, that whole, kind of, that goes with lot E if you look at the original deed.
Okay, so...
And like I say, I think a lot of things, and I'm guessing because it was long before my time, that line that got snapped from Oxford-Millbury, you know, that changed things and nobody went back and resavaged things back in that day, timeframe?
Yeah, they, they decided they like straight lines.
And I'm not, I'm just saying, you know, I don't think anybody followed up back then.
No.
And I'm trying to, to be honest, trying to straighten out a little bit of it, and when I break it to my siblings, I'd kind of like everything to be as clear as possible.
Well, I see what you're trying to do.
Instead of kicking the can down the road.
Okay, friend?
Yeah, well, does that piece then become Oxford?
No, it's still, it'll remain.
It'll remain Millbury.
Changes, just that lot F becomes part of that property.
Yeah, anybody who wanted to develop that big thing, they'd have to go to Oxford and Millbury again.
Yep.
Yes.
But that's, that's gonna be that problem then, then.
Okay. I got it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Rich, you good?
I'm good.
I'm good. All right. I make a motion to endorse the A&R plan entitled A&R Plan 178, Federal Hill Road, Oxford-Millbury, Mass., dated July 19th, 2024, prepared by Jarvis Land Survey, Inc.
Paul, what, did you call it, you call it an A&R plan?
Yeah.
It is an A&R.
Endorse the A&R plan entitled...
Why doesn't the title block say an A&R plan?
Title block on the plan here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't say it.
And we're, by saying A&R, we're approving all of these lots. And I don't see, you know, I thought it was just gonna be the way it was labeled, like that, so I was good with it. But when you say A&R, that means that that lot F, or whatever that little sliver is down there, now becomes a lot.
When you say the sliver, I mean, but it...
It's still, it's because if we approve it as an A&R plan, it's a lot now.
Well, lot F.
It's lot C, right? And lot F, I mean, it's...
Lot F you're talking about, right, Rich?
So...
This little sliver right here, that's a lot.
That's lot C, right?
Through the chair, the lot is labeled as non-buildable.
Right. At this time.
I know that, but do you think that ever stopped an attorney? Seriously.
It says not a building lot at this time.
Because you're calling it an A&R plan, then give some rights. Whatever.
So I'm sorry. So you're talking about lot C, that little sliver? This A&R plan?
Yeah, well, we only have, you know, Bruce, we only got jurisdiction of what's in our town.
Right.
Understand that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So we're saying that that's, you know, we're giving you, yeah, an okay that that's a lot in our town, if we call it an A&R plan. If we're not calling it an A&M plan, and just, I don't know what you'd...
What would you call it, then?
A, a plan of, I mean, it's a plan of property. But the problem is, I think you're trying to divide it into lots, so there's new, so unfortunately, that means that there's gonna be new lines of ownership.
Yes.
Because the brothers and...
Right.
...are gonna own it. Which now creates more of an A&R plan, but, you know, 99% of this is in Oxford, which their mind was, I don't blame them. I just, I don't know.
Well, that was my original question as to why lot F didn't take more of lot E.
Whatever.
I, I may be guessing here, but lot F is 60,000 square feet, which in the town of Millbury is the minimum lot size, and I believe it may also be the minimum lot size in Oxford. But nonetheless, it is still labeled a non-buildable parcel because it doesn't have any frontage on a...
Yeah, but with all due respect, not at this time. That's what it says.
Yeah, I mean, if someone were to construct the right-of-way that's shown on the plan, that would need to go through subdivision control in both towns, and it could be buildable at some point in the future if they constructed a road, but...
Right.
At this time, it's not a buildable lot.
The thing that bothers me about A&Rs, you know, there are individuals in this town that came back with an A&R three times. I want to avoid that. In other words, he subdivided his property with an A&R. Twice.
I mean, if a property, if you have the area and the frontage and you want to subdivide your property, that's...
Not through an A&R. I don't like that A&R stuff.
I mean, that's legally, that's legally the way to do it.
You have to be an A&R, friend, you're not gonna get around that, right?
I'm not trying to give the guy a hard time, I just find problems every time we do an A&R.
So there's no houses on any of these?
There's one.
In Oxford, there's houses. I mean, well, on lot A, yeah, there's a house.
Oh, okay.
That's none of the ones that we're working with today, though?
No.
No.
But it was actually, I mean, from the way it worked, right, that was one big piece, lot A, B, and C is one contiguous deed. And so I have to, in order to, you know, give to my brothers and sisters, I have to break it up.
Right.
And this is what we've agreed to. And basically, it followed, why it looks so funny, it follows stone walls for the most part, so nobody's like, oh, it's in the middle of the field here, so we just cut as much as possible, follow old stone walls, so that's your side, that's my side.
See, quite frankly, what would have made this work easier is if you put lot C, so many square feet Oxford, so many square feet Millbury. Okay? He's just saying the lots, the square footage, and... Quite frankly, that causes a problem for assessors, because now they don't know how much to assess them for that, because they don't know how much the square footage is, you know, and I'm just, what?
Well, Oxford and Millbury's gonna tax them. How much you gonna do?
Oh, yeah, we're both gonna hit them, yeah, okay. I don't think it's gonna work quite that way.
I can be honest right now.
Huh?
Not paying taxes on that, that sliver on pot C, you're not paying taxes to Millbury. If you look up, it says it's unowned, and it's...
Don't say that too loud.
No, I expect when this is all said and done, I'll be dealing with the assessors from Millbury as well.
Yeah, through, through the chair, this is a parcel that is in the assessor's database as a null parcel, where we don't know the ownership. So through this A&R process, we do now have, know the owner, and will, as the petitioner mentioned, they'd be working with the assessors to get set up in that system as well.
Well, that triangle's owned by you already. It's already owned by them. It's just the fact that part of it's in Millbury.
The town doesn't know who owns it.
We didn't, we didn't know that until this A&R.
No, that's the lot next to it, Paul.
We just found out.
That's the lot next to it. That triangle piece next to lot E, he already owns, his family owns.
Yeah, but he said he's not getting taxed on it.
I know it. How come?
I mean, I can't, I mean, I honestly don't know, but I, as I'm trying to clean up my mother's estate.
He should have the square footage.
He's gotta have the square footage on this and this.
Right.
This and this, and this and this. Okay? And then, and then you can say that, you know, lot, this lot is part of, you know, the combination of the two towns. Okay, we can get away with that as an A&R plan, but when you just say A&R plan and you show separate lots in different towns. We don't have jurisdiction in Oxford. I don't know what else to say. We can only talk about what's in Millbury.
Right, right.
You know, so I'm, I'm, sorry. Is there any chance he can fix this? He should be able, it should take him 10 minutes to do the...
But then I'm gonna have to go back to Oxford, right?
What's that?
Then I'm gonna have to go back to Oxford and get it all signed again in Oxford again?
Oh.
Not necessarily.
Yes, yeah, they've signed, Oxford has signed this plan, so if this board requires changes...
Yeah, chances are the people in Oxford are not gonna give you a hard time.
No, I'm, I'm...
Because of the little, you know, I doubt, I seriously doubt they're gonna give you...
No, just for me, it's timing. I'm trying to get this wrapped up, then I'm...
You wanna get it off your head.
I went around twice in Oxford and...
Get it off your head. I hear what you're saying, you wanna get it off your head, off your back. I understand.
I'm sorry, I just...
No, I'm not trying to give him a hard time either, I just wanna understand what's happening here, that's all. Because lot C's involved with it, too.
I'm surprised he doesn't have the square footage.
I'm surprised he didn't pick up on this, his house. He's pretty good, so I'm really surprised that he missed that.
You mean square footage per town?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I agree. I don't know if it's a reason to make them come back, but it's something that obviously needs to be corrected for taxing purposes.
Because the assessors will need to know the square footage to produce a tax bill.
Yeah, but...
Make it a condition that he has to...
No, you can't condition A and R.
Can't condition an A and R, no. That was my question on that big triangle. He's not getting taxed on that at all, although you own it, or the family owns it.
Family owns it.
So you're not getting, well, maybe Oxford's taxing, taxing you for that whole parcel. I don't know.
Probably, probably was, because that's the way it was, like I say, when you look at the way the town boundaries were originally, it was all in Oxford and then...
So you may be paying taxes in Oxford for that piece.
I mean, we're paying taxes on a piece that we don't own, so it's, it's another story.
Lucky you. You're doing good.
I'm, I'm just trying to straighten it all out, and it's been a...
That's what happens when you're a land baron.
I wish I wasn't the...
Well...
What do you want to do?
What's your pleasure? Well, what'd you like to do? Would you like to risk the vote?
I'd risk the vote, I guess.
If we, if we vote against this, what's, what is the consequence?
You would essentially be denying that this is an as, as of right subdivision of land, and that he would need to go through the subdivision approval process in the town of Millbury to do this. I'd have to, he would have to come back and submit a subdivision, a definitive subdivision to our board.
And if he continues it, to get this little question squared away?
There, there is a 21-day deadline for the planning board to endorse an A&R, which has been filed with the town clerk, so...
Which you wouldn't make.
The applicant, and there's a constructive grant deadline. If the planning board doesn't endorse it within that 21-day window, the applicant can elect to extend the constructive grant deadline to the following meeting. So those, those are the options, is either vote, vote to endorse it tonight, or see if the applicant is willing to extend the constructive grant deadline.
I don't wanna give the guy a hard time, but I don't either.
I have a question. Can I? Do the chair? Rich, can you help me understand actually what are the consequences of, like, not having the plan drawn out the way... not having the plan drawn out the way that it should be for this A and R?
Well, the attorneys will come in and have a field day with this. They'll say it's a lot, you approved it.
Yeah.
Your board approved it. You know, uh, you just, you can't. Because of the logistic society we're in right now, we really, it, it's not wise to leave anything hang, hanging fruit like that for them to come in and.
So.
Snip at.
Hypothetically.
And then if we say no, based on the fact that, you know, it, it isn't, then the town goes to court and we end up having to spend thousands of dollars and.
So.
Why I don't wanna.
Can I ask a hypothetical, just so I can understand this a little bit better?
Yep.
If we, let's say it's approved the way it is written now.
Hmm.
And let's say somebody goes to try to build it out. They have to still go through, like Connor said, go through and figure out where the li- the property lines are and still see if it's buildable at that point as well, anyway, or? Isn't, is it the same result even if we say no to it or yes to it? So I'm trying to get at.
The problem, if it wasn't an A and R plan, then I wouldn't be worried about it, but because it's an A and R plan, it's basically saying we're approving all the lots on this, on this plan, which, you know, granted, there's only a couple.
As a lot, as a lot.
Milbury, but, you know, fortunately, the Oxford ones, we're not doing, cause we don't have any jurisdiction, right?
But I guess I, I, for my benefit, I mean, without, you know, without proper frontage and stuff, it's not a buildable lot. And so I don't see the risk. I mean, cause you can say, well, this little piece, you can, I mean, there's no frontage. I mean, I don't need the requirements of frontage and stuff like that, I would think would be required.
If they, if they had put some kind of note on that, they'd just show it all as one big piece. There should have been some notes on this or something, trying to disqualify this from ever being a lot. There isn't any.
Well, I mean, it says not, not buildable. I guess I was told by Oxford, you know, not buildable at this time, and that's what everybody was happy with there.
Right.
Okay, well. I got. I have a, a motion on, on the table. Uh, I did not hear a second before that motion. Through the chair?
Yeah.
Here's, here's my thought process. I don't, I dislike A and Rs, you know that. But somebody buys that piece of property, Lot E. The developer wants to come in and throw up twenty houses. If he puts that road in, he's gonna have a problem because the lands in Milbury and the lands in Oxford.
Well, the Milbury side will be Lot F, I believe, right?
Well, it's.
I don't know.
Through the chair, if Lot E were to ever be developed, they would likely have to follow the subdivision rules and regulations in both towns, particularly the, the portion in Milbury would follow the subdivision rules in the town of Milbury, and likewise, the portion in Oxford would have to follow the subdivision regulations in the town of Oxford.
You're just trying to straighten out the will, is what you're trying to do.
Yeah, I'm just trying to.
I understand what you're trying to do. I just don't wanna get us into a bind.
I understand, I mean, I mean.
That's all. I understand a hundred percent what you're trying to do.
I, I'm the one gonna get it, Lot E, and I'm, I have no intentions of developing it, be it all, after my.
I, I don't have a problem with any of this if it had just been a little bit.
Yeah.
More specific.
The chair?
Yeah.
Do you have a problem if we extended this to get this corrected?
Only reason, I'm just frustrated trying.
Time is a.
Time, time is the only issue I have. I mean, that's the only problem. Then I feel like I have to go back to Oxford again. Now, I, you know, I'm just gonna lose another month and a half tomorrow. That's my only frustration, maybe.
Yeah, but Connor, wasn't there an issue with that, with us, with that twenty-one day?
Yeah, so through the chair, if, if, if there are any plan changes, this would have to go back to the town of Oxford's planning board. Uh, additionally, there is a twenty-one day deadline for this board to endorse it. So the applicant would need to agree to extend the grant deadline, uh, the constructive grant deadline beyond the, the current date of May twenty-second.
You'd be willing to do that?
I mean, I've been doing this for a year. That's the only problem. I stopped a year ago. That's my, that's, I'm, I'm just sorry, I'm.
I mean, for, for whatever it's worth, I, I feel like this plan is adequate, um, adequately describes the, the, the creation of lots, and I think the note for, uh, the non-buildable lots is sufficient. I believe that, obviously, the, the town of Oxford voted to endorse this as well, so.
Yeah, I would strongly suggest you attend a MLC seminar on legal aspects.
Yeah.
Of this particular case, because the statement you're making, I do not believe is a hundred percent correct.
They all say it's not a buildable lot at this time.
Correct. I, I think the idea is that should that right-of-way ever get developed, that lot could be buildable.
But that right-of-way would have to be turned into a, a road.
A road that meets subdivision standards, yes.
That would require a lot, so.
But you'd still have the problem with Oxford and Milbury.
Yeah, I mean, I.
There's no way you're gonna get out of that. I don't care what you do.
Yeah, there's a, there are a lot of properties that are split on between two municipalities, and typically, you have to follow the zoning regulations and the subdivision regulations in each respective town.
That's fine, but this is an A and R. Well.
And just so you know, too, um, you know, there probably, it, it could probably be let set, and then the town manager, town clerk signs off on it, but I'm gonna warn you, the minute you do that, you put a cl- cloud on the title. Which is, attorneys love that, because they're gonna exploit that. Um, if you go to get money from a bank based on the property or whatever, and they see that there's any kind of cloud on the title, interest rates go jacking up. You know, I know it's a pain in the.
Yeah.
Neck. Uh, yeah, I was trying to think of it.
I know what you were thinking of.
But, boy, you don't wanna, you know, another week or two is not gonna make. And it's gonna.
I think that should be so much better for you.
I mean, so, I mean, I mean, I guess I'm not even quite sure what you want me to do. I mean, now, did.
Just, just ask for a postponement, so they, and, and call up jobs and tell them to put the damn, you know, square footages on each, each side of the lot. Make a note that, you know, so much is in Milbury, so much is in. You got three lots that, that the town line is bisecting, right?
Yes. Well, I mean, it's actually bisecting two lots, cause Lot E was, is one lot today. Lot E is one lot. F, F is, but I'm breaking out of Lot E.
There's a town line going through Lot E.
Yeah, right through Lot E, yeah, goes.
What I'm saying is, there's three pieces of land.
Oh, at, at, at the final result, there'll be three pieces in Milbury.
Right, and the square footage should be put on those and called out.
Just to keep.
And take it off the Oxford.
It's only gonna help.
Cause Oxford, you know what's gonna happen? Oxford's gonna bill you for that total amount.
It's only gonna help you in the end, when you come, when it comes time to, to, uh, separate all these properties with your family.
Get sold or whatever.
I mean, they're going to my siblings, I mean.
Yeah, it's only gonna make it easier for you, though, if, if you do that.
I guess I, I, I don't understand that, but okay, I mean.
So, uh, I'll, I'll give you Lot C, um, where it says four hundred and twenty-nine point seven-five feet. That's from, uh, point A to point B. We need the square footage of that entire area where the Milbury line is. And then when you go up to, uh, Lot F, we need the square footage of that, uh, piece of property, and then the square footage of, uh, Lot E, that's gonna be still Milbury property. So each Milbury property, he would probably be able to do this without even going out on the field, right?
Yeah, it'd take him five minutes.
Yeah.
On a computer to spit this out. I'm sorry, you know, and that's, that's the aggravating part of this.
I'm just, yeah.
It's only, it's only to your advantage to.
I just wish somebody had kinda mentioned it earlier, that's all, I mean, I'm trying to get it all done at once.
Nobody caught it.
No, now I have to go back, and it's coming another, two months before I'm done.
But it's up to you whether you wanna.
Actually, I'm surprised Oxford didn't pick up on that.
Whether or not you wanna do a continuance.
For the whole thing.
I can't make the continuance. You have to request it.
On this for sure.
If you don't want it, then we vote on it.
I guess if I take a vote and you could say, you turn it down, then what's, I have to come back and do it all again anyway, right?
Yeah, so th- through the chair, if, if the board were to not endorse the A and R, that would be the board saying that this needs a subdivision, a definitive subdivision, and the only way to appeal it would be through land court or superior court.
I mean, I couldn't come back.
That's, that's, that's what I was looking for.
Stuff on again, right?
That's another.
That's what I was looking for, for an answer earlier. Um, it's, it's not something that we wanna, uh, take a chance of, uh, getting a no, cause this would hurt you.
Well, I, I guess I, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I can.
Can you, can you?
If, if this, if this board were to not endorse the, this A and R plan tonight, um, your recourse would, for appeal, would be to go to, would be to appeal it in land court or superior court.
Yeah, okay.
He can't come back before this board?
No, I know.
Not with this plan.
You're better off not to take a vote on it at all, if you're gonna deny, I mean, I understand what the guy. What is Lot E, just? It's in Oxford and Milbury. What does the deed say?
The, the deed says, like, you can see where it says bound, found, you know, in these places. It goes to these boundaries, which, which are no longer.
They're no longer correct.
They're no longer correct, but that, that's how old these deeds are.
Deeds is gonna say to the town line between Oxford and Milbury, when in fact.
These deeds go back almost to the eighteen hundreds.
Yeah, he's, you got a mess. Congratulations.
This is.
And, and through the chair, it's not, it's not particularly uncommon to have parcels that are owned in both municipalities. There, if you think of the, uh, Route twenty, all, a lot of those parcels are frontage in Worcester, and the back half of that property is in Milbury.
Okay. So he needs to get the square footage for those three lots and put on the plan.
Well, yeah, then he's gonna adjust the square footage on those lots for Oxford, cause he's gonna subtract out.
Yeah, so there'll be so many square feet in Oxford, so many.
Leave the same numbers in there, cause you're gonna get a.
No, I know, like, Lot F will have two, two square footages, one from Oxford, one for.
We're just trying to save you a headache down the road, cause I think you're gonna get one, if this is like it is.
Well, I mean, well, whatever, all right. All right, I guess I, I withdraw the plan then, right?
So does he have to ask for an extension?
A continuance.
Yeah, through, through the chair, but if the applicant is agreeable to extending the constructive grant deadline, I would suggest doing that until the day after the next planning board meeting, which is June tenth.
What do you mean? Is, is that something?
And of course, now I gotta go back to Oxford, so I guess I'm trying to figure out how.
Yeah, you should, yeah, you should have plenty of time.
I have to, I, I changed the plan, I have to go back.
Yeah.
Yeah, when, when is Oxford's next planning board meeting?
They, they follow the same schedule you follow.
So they're tonight?
Yeah.
So that don't do you any good.
What's, what's gonna hurt him from coming here first, though?
Did the same night, Bruce.
Yeah.
Oh.
He says he, they follow our schedule.
I was, like, two weeks ago, when, you know, I got approval of Oxford, I, it's like, I can't come the next day.
So it'll be, it'll be four weeks before he gets anything. It'll be four weeks before he gets anything done. It's gonna be August.
Well, I, it, you, you could just, you know, schedule him for that meeting and then just have him call to find out. Oxford, don't they normally have their A and R plans right up front?
Yeah, yeah.
At the very beginning of their meeting, and then they move on to other things.
But I have to bring the ILRs in, right, then you have to sign the ILRs and, you know, like, of course, so, yeah, okay, whatever.
Yeah, well, it's still.
It's whatever, okay.
And then you could just schedule a meeting for a little later at our meeting and walk in with it, and you're done.
Same day?
Same day. Could do it.
I can ask, yeah.
Oxford isn't that far away.
No, no, no.
Situation to them, and they can, you know, I'm sure they're willing to work with you, too. I, I don't, I can't imagine that they would be.
Okay.
I'm surprised they didn't pick up on that, to be honest with you.
Well, the first time they made me put not buildable lots, that's, they kicked me out the first time, and I.
Oh, okay, I, I.
Yeah, I'm surprised they didn't pick up on the square footage part of it.
That's why the frustration, I've been back and forth a couple times in Oxford already, so.
But even if you, Lot F, what if he, your brother decides he wants to build a house on that? You, you, you got.
Oh, he's gonna have to make a road first.
I mean, that was my whole thing. You have to, you have to put a road in, and that's gonna be.
You got Milbury, Oxford going right through this lot. That's why it seems like we're splitting hairs over. I know, I, I don't have a prob- you know.
All right, so what do we want? Extend the constructive grant deadline for endorsement?
If the applicant is agreeable.
Yeah, I don't.
I, I don't know.
Are you agreeable?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, yeah, I have no choice.
It'd be so much, it'd be so much better. I don't, I don't know what to tell you, I just.
And that's when? That's June?
Sorry?
What?
Uh, I would suggest June tenth.
June tenth.
So I'll make a motion to extend the constructive grant deadline for endorsement of the A and R plan for one seventy-eight Federal Hill Road, Oxford, Milbury, Mass.
Second.
To June tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Okay, I got a motion that's been seconded. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, sir. Thank you for your time. I'm sorry that's.
Sorry about that, but we're just trying to save you something down the road. Well.
Okay, I'll give you a call tomorrow.
All right. I feel bad now, and I never feel bad.
Uh, the A and R for seventy-six Burbank Street.
Uh, through the chair, we did get a request from that, um, applicant that they would like to continue it, and they've requested to extend, extend the constructive grant deadline to June tenth. Uh, this is another split, uh, parcel between the town of Milbury and the town of Sutton, and the town of Sutton had some additional, um, requests, changes that they'd like to see made to the plan, so that's why we're.
Oh, okay.
We're gonna see this at the June tenth.
That's why we're not on tonight, to have gone before Sutton again.
Do it, do me a favor. Make sure that they cut the square footage.
Put the square footage on.
When you see the plan, then, and if you don't see it, let them know.
All right, it is in your, it's in your board packet, too, if you'd like to take a look at it.
Okay.
Okay, I make a motion to extend the constructive grant deadline for endorsement of the A and R plan for seventy-six Burbank Street until June tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion that's been seconded. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I make a motion to approve the minutes of April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Uh, I got a motion that's been seconded. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, mail and staff updates.
Uh, just give a, through the chair, I'll give a quick recap of the town meeting last week. Um, there were six zoning amendment articles, um, on the town warrant. For those of you that were there or heard, four of them failed to pass. The two that passed were the zoning reformatting. Um, that was the, the article to just re, kinda renumber everything and fix up some of the formatting of the document. Um, and then MBTA communities, the pla- uh, the Board of Selectment proposal passed. So both of those will be submitted to the Attorney General for review and approval, and the MBTA communities, uh, article will be also submitted to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities for their review and approval. Another zoning update, we just got word, uh, last week that the Article Six from the special town meeting in the fall, that was the, uh, citizens petition to, um, eliminate the Bremenville zoning district and the adaptive reuse overlay district, that was, um, disapproved by the Attorney General in their review. I included that memo in your board packet.
Why?
What board packet?
What was the reasoning?
Yeah, why?
The reasoning, we'll summarize.
It was on the.
Because the town, this is from their letter, because the town did not amend its zoning map to reflect the changes to the district boundaries as required by Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Sections three, four, and five, and because we conclude that the town did not adopt Article Six for a legitimate planning purpose.
So because we didn't submit a zoning map with the request, they denied it? Is that pretty much what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I mean, it's a six-page document, and it's in your, it's in your, um, SharePoint packet.
I'm just trying to rationalize why they said it was bad.
Yeah, I mean, well, typically zoning amendments that change the, the zoning map need to reference that in the zoning amendment article that gets approved by town meeting, and the petition didn't include that. So I think that was part of their rationale.
So we can just resubmit it then with a map, right?
I'll have to double-check if that would constitute a repetitive petition, but it's possible.
I mean, it's, same thing.
Well, I would assume, I would assume you have, you can appeal it, and your appeal would include the map, for as ridiculous as it is.
I, I'm not sure that this is appealable.
It's gotta be.
It has to be, they, they just, they are not God. Getting tired of this state.
Anyway, and more good news, the 269 West Main Street, the wireless communication facility, the cell tower, that, the applicant has also submitted an appeal to Superior Court, so I will keep the board posted on that, but just in case you got any communication from that filing.
It was never denied.
The planning board denied the cell tower special.
It was denied, you voted against it.
You voted against it.
You voted against it.
I, I don't remember that we took a vote on it.
So.
I forget too, I can't remember.
So, through the chair.
Yeah.
What are we gonna do about the village? We're not gonna forget it. So what are we gonna do as a board about the village? We need to appeal that. I know you don't want to because that's counter to a planner's calling to, to push those kind of developments, I get it. But that development just wasn't good. It was just too loosey-goosey written. We need to eliminate it and maybe create another one, I'm game with that.
Well, that was a citizens' petition, so, does the citizen have to?
Not necessarily, it was approved at town meeting. Now the town's gotta appeal it. It was approved by the citizens.
So if that's.
Send more money.
Everybody's worried about money, we got $120,000.
Back it up a step here.
For what? I have no idea.
If that's something that you, you feel strongly about, Rich, we should actually have a discussion about it and possibly see if we all agree on it.
Okay.
We can start that way, I think. If that's something we want to do right now, we can certainly do that. I, I just don't want one person making a decision for the, for the board. That was a citizen petition that, did, did the planning board recommend that?
I was just trying to think of that myself, I, I can't recall off the top of my head.
Okay, so maybe we should research that a little bit and see where we are, and, and bring it up on our next meeting, so that we can get to the bottom of that.
Through, through the chair?
Yeah.
I don't think it matters whether or not we endorsed it. Town meeting approved it, yeah, but town meeting approved it.
Yeah, so where does it go from there?
It went from town meeting to the state.
Where does it go from this point? Can, can it be done? Can you do some research on that?
I will, I will take a look to see if there's any appeals process.
Preferably, we could just amend it, send the map in and it'll be done.
Yeah, redo.
Because if it's truly just the map.
You're talking a redo.
Then it's no big deal. If they're alternative, if they use the map as an excuse and they've got other alternative method, reasons, then it's gonna come out in the wash.
Well, I, I would, I would suggest reading the decision that was in your SharePoint package, but I can, I can look into, to see if there's any way to, I, I don't believe there's any way to amend the zoning that was approved at town meeting, that, that's already set in stone. So I, I would imagine an entirely new zoning amendment would need to be proposed.
I don't agree with that. Might have to be a new one.
Like I said, I will check.
It has to be a new one.
I'm not aware of a process for that, but.
All we're talking about here is a map.
So.
So there's, we're not changing anything.
Six pages, I don't think it was just about the map.
Yeah, I haven't.
Well, they, they're very long-winded.
So if we can find, see what you can find out about that, so we can talk about it at the, at the next meeting, okay? Please, yes, Terry.
Okay, Terry Burke, Dotson 20, Salo Terrace. Can that long decision, the six-page decision, be put up so that the citizens can read it and not just a few people? I mean, so they can be posted so that all of the citizens can read that? The citizens voted for it, can they, where can you place that and how do we get to it?
It is available in the planning office, I can look to see if there's a way to get it on the website.
Right, right, we want to be able to read it.
Be happy to send you a copy as well.
Okay, that's good, I appreciate that, thank you.
And it's in SharePoint, you say?
Yep.
Yep.
Swear I looked at that today, you know, nothing in there, but the meeting.
It was there.
Was it? Okay.
Wanna kill IT.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Denied. I have one more thing.
What did he say? Bet you never thought you'd hear that, huh?
He wants to make it out to his truck tonight, you know what I'm saying?
Hey, I'll go till midnight if you want.
At our last meeting, Rich had brought up a, a thing about a citizen speak, is that what it was?
Well, yeah, it's similar to, I just use that as an example.
Okay.
Like what they, what the, um, servant have.
I just wanted to have a, a short discussion on that, because I, I personally disagree with it, because our audience is always involved in what we discuss. Even to put a time limit on, I'll use tonight for example, Terry is the only person here, I can't put a, a three-minute time limit on her comment. The only time that I would do something like that would be as if, if there's a lot of people here. Citizen speak doesn't really make sense for the planning board.
Nope.
I don't think, because we have discussions all night long anyway, with, with the public.
And, and you're right.
Any, any feedback on that?
Yeah, well, in this board, the public is very involved, whatever public comes here.
They wanna come.
Right. If they come, they're very involved, and, you know, we've allowed that, or, you know, the chair in the past has allowed that. That citizen speak thing is ridiculous, in my opinion. I tried, I tried to get that particular board to open it up. When you're talking about a subject, let a citizen pipe in. Don't make me wait till the end of the meeting after you've already said yes. You know what I'm saying?
On the selectmen's meetings you're talking about.
Ah, I didn't wanna say, but you did. There's a few boards.
I don't want people to think you're talking about this board.
No, no, we let people speak here. And it's, it's an open meeting.
It's very time-consuming and we try to listen to everybody's opinion.
And I think it's.
So I don't know that a citizen speak thing would be of any help, it would be, it would probably be damaging if.
What are you gonna talk about?
Right.
That's the thing, come in and talk about anything, that's not.
I don't know what it was.
I don't know if you meant to.
Literally going for a citizen, that, I was, I was encouraged by the town manager to really consider time limits, like citizen speech, where they limit the time to a certain amount of time.
Yeah, why?
Not necessarily to hold a citizen speak per se on the planning board, so I think maybe this is getting a little bit.
It's out of.
Questioned that it doesn't need to be, that's all.
Okay, so the time limit thing, I mean, how, how do you do that? Like if there's, there's 30 people out there, you, you limit them to four minutes, that goes by like that.
Like the appeals board did for, when they had their meetings.
Yeah, they didn't let anybody talk.
No, they did, but they put a time limit on it.
And you could do 10 minutes, that's a lot of time to talk for one person.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Or you could do five minutes, we did three.
They had three minutes, I think, on the appeals board.
As an example the other day with Steve.
It was very short.
He was cut off like that, and he didn't believe that it was three minutes.
I know, you were right, you were the pumpkin. Yeah, hey, you're done.
So.
Well, this is, this board here.
I just wanted to bring that up to make sure that everybody's on the same page, so that you're more interested in a time limit on a crowd or on anybody.
Well, if you see repetition, you know, you can say.
Right, it's the same thing.
It's the same thing, I, I'm sorry, I have to stop you now because it's repetitious, it's been said already two or three times, that's where you shut them off. But to say you can only speak three minutes, it, it's crazy.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Because this is a whole different ballgame.
Yeah.
In here, well, we're looking at plans and zoning and everything, you know, it's a big, it's a big difference.
So maybe we can come up with a timeframe, listening, I mean, 10 minutes, even 15 minutes, I don't wanna listen to somebody 15 minutes, it's a long time, right?